Property. This is a continued public hearing for the consideration of the proposed annexation agreement by which certain property would be annexed to the city. The owner, Tempco Electric Heater Corporation, has petitioned to annex the property located at 6 N 504 Central Avenue, which is currently unincorporated DuPage County. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacobs?
Here.
Alderman Lucina? Alderman Sorrentino? Alderman Sizmarsky? Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
I'm here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police?
Here. I declare a quorum present. Let the record reflect that notice of this hearing was duly published in the Daily Herald newspaper on December 28th, 2015. A copy of the published legal notice will be made a part of the record as Exhibit A. The hearing has been continued since then until this evening. The property under discussion is legally described in the legal notice attached heretofore as Exhibit A. The property bears the common address of 6 N 504 Central Avenue, Wood Dale, Illinois. I will now open up the public hearing. The property owner and the city are still engaged in discussions regarding the property. The public hearing is going to be continued until July 21st, but I hear that somebody is here from Tempco. Mr. Wicklund? If you'd please like to go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Paul Wicklund. I'm Chief Financial Officer with Tempco Electric Heater Corporation. I live in Arlington Heights. My address is 1720 East Crabtree Drive in Arlington Heights. First of all, I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to address the council. I appreciate the proposal to continue the public hearing. This issue is a little complicated and we do need a little more time. Our legal counsel, along with the city's legal counsel, I think are working diligently to resolve the matter. And, you know, as a company, we've been here in town since 1988 and it's certainly our desire to stay in Wood Dale. We do think we're a viable member of the business community. We employ 450 people, roughly. I'm not sure if we're the largest employer in Wood Dale, but I think we're pretty close, if we're not the largest. This relates to a parking issue. Because of our growth, we do have a, we do, we are challenged with parking and of course that's what this property relates to. But I certainly, on behalf of Tempco, we appreciate your cooperation on this and ask for the continuance to stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we entertain a motion to close the public hearing and to be continued July 21st, 2016. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacobs?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you, Mr. Wicklund. Next, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacobs?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods? Here.
And I'm here. Please stand and join the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the city council minutes of May 5th, 2016.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do not have any written communiques, but I do have one resident who would like to be heard, Mr. Joe Tulo. If you could please go to the microphone. Some handouts? Okay, Mr. Tulo, if you could just name an address, please, for the record.
My name is Joe Tulo. I'm the owner of the building at 365 East Irving Park Road in Wood Dale. I've owned the building for over 10 years and I wanted to take this opportunity to ask for some consideration in proposing a win-win situation for Wood Dale and its business district in Irving Park Road. As you know, there's a lot of properties that, and a lot of vacancies, that are available on Wood Dale and Irving Park Road in Wood Dale and also in Bensonville. I've had, I know that the city has instituted a long range planning for zoning under the 2011 Unified Development Ordinance. However, changes like this might take decades for implementation. And the reason I bring that to your attention, I'm proposing a change in a zoning change and see what the possibility for special use or a zoning change could be for my site. I've had the building empty for almost a year right now and the current structure about the building was built in 1963. It's over 50 years old. It was lawfully constructed. It's a mixed-use building and the building was zoned accordingly. I have provided some documentation at one time that the building had to be zoned C3 or whatever was popular at that time when the building was. Okay? It originally was owned by a gentleman who manufactured wrought iron railings there and it was available for other usage, which have had special uses, et cetera. Like I had mentioned, the building's been empty for almost a year and the current zoning doesn't match the building site and the layout. I'm recognizing the possibility of putting a round peg and a square hole here. The special use and zoning change can assist in keeping buildings such as mine, which are older, as viable and rented and ask for a chance to see a lot of not of for rent signs up and down Irving Park Road and help the community. We want to keep buildings like that and not give an impression and then a lot of for rent signs occupy commercial properties provide a favorable impression for the community. The existing zoning is so restrictive and it's made the building very undesirable to rent for me. Points to consider that I brought up. The precedent for this change has been established by an existing service station, which is one building over from my building. So there is already use for automotive and, automotive and service station on the same side of the street and it also backs up to residential buildings. There's a grandfather, my question would be, was there, at the time of any of these zonings, when this was done, was there a grandfather provision for such buildings like mine that you could reconsider? And why wasn't the building grandfathered at that point? I know that it's a, it's a general term as far as grandfathered, but I think that buildings that were built for specific uses and you change the zoning on them, again, I go back to the square peg and the round hole and makes them very difficult to rent. The owners in the city also must recognize and acknowledge that this is in a highly competitive, active competition for potential renters in the area. We can't make the market for the business if they're not there. Okay? We have to help new businesses. I had sent a memo to the city council and an article. Arlington Heights was offering loans for $50,000 for people, for interest-free loans for businesses to start up in their community. And I know that Melrose Park has done that with some automotive and Lombard and various other suburbs in the Chicago area and in the DuPage County area. So I think these are things we should consider because I think a lot of people would not want to have to travel to Schaumburg or Addison or some other community to get their cars fixed or any other services that might be provided for them. We, as a family, have invested a significant amount of capital in this building, not including our taxes and insurance. It's not corporate-owned. It's a family-owned business and we're not owned by a large corporation. Obviously, it's caused a lot of economic hardship. I'm just asking for assistance in the city to make this property an asset to the community and other properties like it that are up and down this, to make our village and, I mean, make our city and the immediate area a viable economic consideration for potential businesses that can help solve my problem and also be a win-win situation for the city of Wood Dale. I have a gentleman here tonight who also would like to use it for automotive and I've had to say no to quite a few people where it wouldn't even be considered. And that's, you know, that's been the interest that I've received on the property is primarily automotive. The area across the street has a tire place, motorcycle place, et cetera. So the precedent of that immediate area has been set and there's a lot of similar, like businesses that are there. So I'm asking for the city council to give us some leadership to help people, again, keep the economic viability of Irving Park Road stronger and asking for help and some suggestions and some leadership and how we could do this to make everything a win-win situation.
Thank you. I would refer to you to Mr. Ed Cage. Have discussions. Did you, Alderman Roy Wesley, you had a question?
Yes. This automotive place that you want to put, I take it the garage there, there's a garage there, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead.
You have living upstairs on that?
Not on the back part of the building. The front part of the building is a living space. The back is, is not.
But does this living space overgo, over, does it hang over the garage?
Go ahead, Mr. Tulo.
It does not. It just, it goes over the front part of the building. There was three separate add-ons to the building over the years. There was one part, then the apartment was added at one time on the top of the front part of the building, which was leased as a commercial space to a jewelry store. And then the back is completely a separate warehouse that's probably 25 feet high in a warehouse. That's about 3,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tulo.
Thank you.
Do any other citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Please state your name and address.
Melissa Stoll, 145 South Cedar Street in Wood Dale. And a couple of questions, starting with, since I've seen that there's to be a Prairie Fest this year, again, same place, same time as basically last year. What is in place for plans on how to educate the public on emergency evacuation procedures and protocols for this year's fest? Also, is there to be a memorial service as any part of this year's event? And those two questions. And then there's a third question I had, separate from that. And dealing with the increased traffic from construction on Wood Dale Road and the, there's been increased traffic, both in its quantity and I'd say speeding, through Murray Drive, Montrose, I also believe Spring Oaks, where people are cutting through to go around the intersection and they're, to avoid the Irving Park-Wood Dale Road intersection. And so, cutting through on Montrose, Murray Drive, Spring Oaks, cutting through on Cedar Street, in the morning going to work and school and in the evening coming home. And with the road closure that's coming up as of, let's see, was it June 6th that it starts? Are there going to be any signages on the streets such as no-through traffic or local traffic only to minimize the impact of the construction on the neighborhoods? So, three questions.
Regarding the Prairie Fest, Mr. Bond, those are legal matters.
Yeah. The, the city's worked as they had in the past and they've got a, a plan in place and that plan has certain, obviously it's got safety measures in store and there's also some other procedures for security and those are not available for the public so as not to jeopardize the safety and security of the festival and of the, of the operation.
And as for the memorial, there's no memorial.
You're going to tell me that you've got a plan for a drill, but nobody gets to know what the instructions are?
Mr. Bond?
That's correct. For security reasons, you're not going to tip your game plan as to what you're going to do for security measures.
Why do you need to secure yourself against bad weather? What security issues are there? This is not, you're talking like this is a terrorist threat.
No, I never said that. Well, there's a safe, no, if I could, if I could answer your question. I said that the, the plan includes, safety measures also include security measures in the plan. It's a comprehensive plan for those purposes. It is not disclosed to the public. The pertinent staff, the police department, the administrative staff and, and the other agencies within the county are participating in that, in that plan.
On your logic, then, in a grade school or the local schools, they shouldn't have their kids drilling for fires and tornadoes with that logic in mind. And you want people to go and have a good time at this thing and you can't trust them to share information on when and where it would be necessary to evacuate?
This item is really not up for debate this evening.
In reference to the second question, with the traffic concerns, before the construction started, I myself have witnessed the traffic going through the streets that you referenced. That is actually part of the reason we're doing the project, to alleviate traffic congestion in the area. Certainly during the construction, there's increased traffic congestion to that area. I would ask the chief, maybe step up those patrols in there or talk to the residents and see what we can do. The end game, the end result would be when the construction would, is completed, it would be less intrusive than it was before, obviously, because we're adding more lanes, eliminating the needs for people to cut through. I believe that is the intent. How, chief?
Chief, you have some further?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that we've spent considerable time in the neighborhoods enforcing cut-through traffic. We can't stop cut-through traffic, but we can stop cut-through traffic from speeding. We've written hundreds of additional citations and I think each year we average about 7,000 citations a year. So it's a priority. We are spending time in the neighborhoods. There's cut-through at different locations with, with secure, with traffic and we continue to enforce the speed violations.
Thank you, chief.
I have a question.
You have to go back to the microphone.
At, at plenty of other construction, road construction sites, I see signages that have been put up for no-through traffic and/or, you know, local traffic only to inhibit what I guess you're calling cut-through, which would be the people going to school or the high school or work or whatever. And has, why can't some signage be put up to minimize the cut-through traffic?
Mr. Murmish?
Unfortunately, this is not necessarily a city project. We do not organize the detours. We do not organize the signage. This is a Illinois Department of Transportation project and they are the project team lead and head and they are complete control of the project you're referencing.
You have no input into this at all, then?
We have input, but we have no final say. We can make a suggestion, which we will, but at the end of the day, we cannot mandate them to do what you're requesting.
I, I just, if other towns get it, how is it that other towns and other projects can get it and not here, apparently, is what you're intimating?
It would be apples to oranges to even insinuate that each project is the same. It's irrelevant. Each project is different. Each project has its own merits and traffic patterns and you, there's no project that's the same, so that's, that argument would not, would not play.
Well, it would be appreciated if it could be, on your part, requested that maybe this be part of the plan.
Go ahead, Mr. Murmish.
We have a weekly construction meeting, so most certainly we will do so.
Do any other residents wish to address the council? Being none, mayor's report, one item, Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May 30th, starting at 11:00 AM till approximately 1:00 PM and then Memorial to follow right at the Memorial. This year, though, the parade will start at Elizabeth Drive and Addison Road going north to Irving Park and then east to the Memorial. And we have one other item. We have, from JDA, Jim and Craig, will give a slight presentation on the Fly Quiet Rotation. They are the SOC consultants for, for the airport, regarding the airport. If you guys would like to introduce yourselves.
Good, it's, sure, good evening. It's, my name is Jim Krieger. This is Craig Burzick. We work for JDA Aviation Technologies and before that, Craig and I were air traffic control specialists at O'Hare Tower for most of our careers. Together, we have about 60, I don't know, 65 or 66 years of experience at O'Hare. So tonight, we wanted to talk with you about the runway rotation plan that's being implemented as a test, beginning on June 1st at O'Hare. First, a little bit of history, really over the last several years and really up until the first quarter of this year, I would say. Three runways pretty much are used over and over again on the midnight shifts at O'Hare. There's a lot of reasons for that and it's 28 right, 27 left and 32 left. And this runway rotation plan should make a change in that. It'll be, I think, a pretty large change, actually. Craig, anything else?
Yeah, the three runways are actually east-west flow, depending on how you use it. They're pretty much pointed at your community here. And in 2014, they were used 78% of the time, the same three runways. When we looked at numbers, first quarter 2015, it was pretty much the same, 74% of the time.
Right. So, so this new rotation plan utilizes the 10 configurations that you see up there on the screen. There's four configurations, runway configurations, that employ the diagonal runways and Craig and I were pretty adamant about that. We felt that the diagonal runways would be helpful, at least for distributing noise more equitably. And then there are six configurations in there also that are parallels or east-west type of runway rotations, okay? Any questions about that?
I think you go through the presentation and then...
We'll just keep going.
Yeah.
Good enough. Okay, so the rotation periods employ those 10 configurations and, and are set up over a 12-week period, okay? So each week, it's a, it's a week-long test period for each configuration, has a primary runway configuration and a secondary runway configuration. As you can see in week one, there's a 28 right arrival runway and a 28 right also being used for departure. And then the secondary runway configuration is the east version of that or landing on runway 10 left and departing runway 10 left. So the, the idea is, is that if you're unable to do the primary runway configuration because of wind, we have the ever-changing wind conditions here in Chicago, at least you'll have the secondary that you can fall back to and use that configuration as well. There's six parallel runway configurations over the 12-week period and six configurations employing the diagonals. So we feel that that's a little bit better of a, more balanced anyways and also provides a better balance for that east and west flow issue that Craig was talking about, where 70-something percent of the time we're on west flow. We would like to see that balanced out a little bit more where east flows employed more often. Anything else in there, Craig?
No.
Very good. Next thing we took a look at were the historical winds at O'Hare. Where the yellow box, all that's really showing you is that primarily for the midnight shift at least, Fly Quiet 2 period, let's say, the winds are such that either light enough or out of the direction that would be conducive to just about every one of those configurations, I shouldn't say just about, would make all of those possible. The only, the only question that we will have, though, will be whether or not there's construction or something else that prevents us from using one of the configurations that's up there. For example, in week one, you see 28 right and 10 left is the primary runway and also the secondary runway. Well, this summer, there's going to be some construction on runway 10 right, 28 left on the mid-shifts for about a period of about three months. So therefore, they're going to have to use something else other than that configuration. Runway loadings, the baselines, the blue bars and the green bars are the, how we feel that the runway loadings should be with the runway rotation plan. And, and I use the word should because there's a lot of variables that go into selection of runways, closures, winds, weather, a lot of things, so you can't always count on that. You do see that the, we, we forecast that 28 right and 28 center probably won't be as used as much, but we have to be cautious when we say that because frankly, a lot of heavy aircraft are departing, especially in the wee hours of the morning. And 32% of those aircraft are going distances greater than 3,000 nautical miles. So not only are they heavily laden with cargo and things like that, they're pretty heavy also with fuel and therefore they're going to need a, a long runway. So 28 right or 28 center is usually going to be it. Next, metrics, right? We need, if we're going to do a runway rotation test or runway rotation plan test, we need to make sure we have some sort of metrics to see how it's working out, okay? So we had several meetings with the city of Chicago on this subject. They didn't always agree with us necessarily on what type of metric should be used. However, we did agree on two possible metrics, for starters anyways. All of this stuff is, is still up for discussion, I would say, being that it is a test. But one of the first metrics that we came up were overflights, how many overflights are affecting each community. And the other thing is something called LAEQN. I hope you don't have a whole lot of questions about that because Craig and I are air traffic experts, but not necessarily noise decibel experts. But LAEQN is basically something I'll describe in more detail later, but it's, it's a equivalent noise level for now. So overflights by SOC community, the runway rotation plan are the blue bars this time. You can see that most, most communities have about the same number of overflights. Some have a lot less, some have a, a few more. I think overflights is, is one metric, obviously, like I said, that we could take a look at, but unfortunately, I don't believe that overflights tell the whole story. First of all, you know, any given overflight, how high is it? How low is it for that matter? Is it a departure that is at, close to maximum thrust? Is it an arrival that's staying pretty much on a, on a rail inbound to the airport? And what type aircraft is it? Is it a heavy jet? Is it a light aircraft? What type aircraft? So overflights can be useful, but there's a lot of things that you have to consider before just deciding that that's the only variable that you would like to use. That's why we ended up with the equivalent noise level or LAEQN metric. And the best way to think about it, like that third sentence says up there, however, you can think of this as a type of average, where noisy events have a significant influence over a certain period of time. Take that graph that's up there right now, that, along the bottom is the time period. The red is all the noise that occurred during that time period. And, and then that blue line that's going through there is the average noise over that given period of time. So that's what LAEQN stands for, the equivalent noise level. Kind of confusing, but I think it works probably best for this type of situation. So what could Wood Dale expect as far as equivalent noise levels are concerned? Well, it depends on the runway, runway rotation configuration and use at the time. For example, if you look at week number one, you can see there's actually an increase in the equivalent noise level. That's because runway 28 right is being used as the arrival and the departure runway, so you're having departures coming over Wood Dale. However, week two, you see a, quite a drop in the equivalent noise level. And that basically is the essence of the runway rotation plan, or at least what we would like to see come out of it, that some nights or some weeks you would have noise and other weeks you would have a lot less noise than that. So that's what the idea is. Overall, Wood Dale sees a, a somewhat of a drop in the equivalent noise level and, but anyways, the, the main thing is, is that every week they're going to attempt to try to make a different impact on noise for each community. So what's JDA going to be doing while this test is going on? Well, basically, taking a look at the, the months in question and comparing them to the similar months from 2015 and trying to see what the equivalent noise level was for 2015 and what did you get? did you get after doing the runway rotation plan. That's pretty important because frankly, you know, we want to make sure that the test or the runway rotation plan itself is doing what it's supposed to be doing. The other thing that we're going to be taking a look at is something that we feel is long overdue, and that's taking a look at the headings as well. And that's the headings that are used on the Fly Quiet Plan. For example, those 2-8 right departures, they use a 2-9-0 heading. You can see the variation there in that heading, but you can see also, what they're trying to do is get them over a sparsely populated area out there just north of, and I guess just slightly east of Elk Grove.
Right, do you have the other slide?
Yeah, you know what, it's on the stick. But anyways, sometimes they get there, sometimes they don't. But the main thing that concerns us is that Craig and I have been doing this for a long time, and these headings have been around for at least 30 years that I know of. And I'm pretty sure that the communities have changed over those 30 years and perhaps these headings aren't giving people, are giving us all collectively what we want as far as runway heading, or, excuse me, departure headings are concerned during a noise period. So we want to take a look at that. 2-8 center, I think especially for Wooddale, is a runway heading, departure runway right now. So departures off that runway come straight over Wooddale. And really, the only reason for that, that we can see, is that is because by default, basically. Every runway that was in existence back when this was all written, had certain headings associated with it. Some of them weren't mentioned, they would just say, okay, if there's no specific heading, then the default heading is the runway heading. And hence, that's how 2-8 center has the runway heading as well. Doesn't seem real scientific to us. We could be wrong about how that was selected, but doesn't seem scientific. We think we need to take a look and see what headings would work better, perhaps, maybe to the right or left of that. And also, even in this heading here off 2-8 right, maybe something further to the north would be more appropriate.
Right. The air traffic control operation at O'Hare has changed over the past 10 years because of the new runway. So there's a reason why that heading only went so far north. It was because there was, we used to land on 14 right up here, so we don't do that anymore. So now they can actually take that heading and move it further north over the industrial area and get improvement on the noise reduction.
And on the nights that we do land 1-4 right, there can be a stipulation, no headings greater than whatever heading is determined.
We came up with 20 recommendations for noise. So the rotation plan is one of 20. And they're just looking at this one right now because it's the big one. It's the one that provides the most opportunity to spread out noise. One of them is to redo the noise manual. The city's noise manual was out of date. I mean, there's runways in there that we don't depart anymore, they've been in forever, they opened 10 center, they didn't assign a noise abatement heading, and there's a heading available which would offer relief, because that heading comes right over this building, actually. They didn't look at it. And so one of our recommendations is to redo the manual, look at it periodically, update it, especially with all the changes that are going on.
So I think finally, the success of the runway rotation plan will depend on a few things, the ability of it, you know, including weather and construction and all those things for air traffic control to employ that. And frankly, I'm, like I said, I'm kind of glad that it's a test, to be honest with you. I think we will see whether or not it works very well during that test period. And if it does not, JDA, whether it does or doesn't, for that matter, JDA is going to make recommendations for the final runway rotation plan to make sure that it's giving the communities exactly what it was intended to give. Lastly, we're going to be providing technical support. We've been very fortunate to be working with the City of Chicago on this project. And Craig and I will be offering our air traffic control expertise. Dr. Tranny, if you have questions for him, he's our noise metric expert. He'll be taking care of that for us. And then finally, we have Cynthia Schultz doing the airport-related types of technical support. That's all we have tonight. I'm sure you have questions, though, so we'd like to take those next.
Does anyone have questions?
Hold on, Jacob. What were the times of the, the times we're talking about at night? This is at night?
So for Fly Quiet 2 is, well, the Fly Quiet program in general is from 10 o'clock till 7:00 in the morning. Fly Quiet 2 runs from approximately, I believe, 11:00 till 5:30 a.m.
Right. You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
And then this is both for takeoffs and landings, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hold on, Roy Wesley.
Could you go back to that screen of, where it said 52, 55? It said Week 2. Further, keep going.
Keep going.
Nope, nope, nope. The other way.
Other way?
Yep. That one.
Ah, there we go.
Okay, go ahead.
Explain how that Week 2 drops.
Why it drops?
No. Explain how that whole thing works.
Go ahead.
So you have Week 1 on May 1st.
Yep.
Okay, the second week, it drops, right?
Right.
Third week, it goes back up.
Okay, and that is related to those configurations?
Mm-hmm.
Let's go back to that real quick. So Week 1, 2-8 right departures coming over Wooddale.
Right, so we're looking at that.
This top one right here.
Okay.
Week 2, you got 1-4 right arrivals and departures, okay? So everything coming from the northwest and landing towards the southeast, so you get very little activity in this area, or less than you would certainly with 2-8 right. So that's why it goes down at that second week. The third week, we're going to land on runway 10 center here, I'm sorry, excuse me. We're going to land 2-7 left, we're going to depart 2-8 center. So once again, you have departure traffic coming out over you, so back up, it does, it spikes it back up again.
Okay, I understand it now.
Good.
You have a follow-up or?
I don't...
Eugene Wesley.
Is this this commercial or is this cargo planes, too?
Overnight, in the, between like 11 and 5:00 in the morning, it's primarily cargo traffic. And they're pretty heavy.
Right, so...
And Craig has done it recently, so...
Are they going, are they going obey by that, too?
That's the issue, and that was our concern. That's, you know, we not only wanted diagonals, but we wanted that long runway in play. You have to have it because they're going to ask for it, and air traffic control cannot turn them down on that either. It's up to the pilot in command to say, hey, I need this runway. And they need it for a variety of reasons, not only for how much runway they need to get airborne, but also how much runway they need to accelerate and stop if they had to do a high-speed rejected takeoff without going off the end of the runway type of situation. So they're going to ask for it, and we've been told that, you know, it should be only a handful of departures that will ask for that. That's why I said, once again, I'm glad this is a test, because I think we'll see whether or not it's a handful or not.
Right. 2-8 right's a 13,000-foot runway. It's the longest runway in the country, except for Denver. Denver has a 15,000-foot runway, but that's because it's a mile high. You know, the air's thinner at a mile up. So it's a long runway, the cargo flights, they're heavy. Heavy 747, 400, 800 can go up to a million pounds, that gross takeoff weight, so it needs a longer runway. But the city believes, what they're saying is that, we don't think everybody needs that runway when they say they need it, you know? They just take it because it's a long runway, and that's what pilots do. So what they're going to do in some of these configurations, like if you look at, oh, anything that doesn't have 2-8 right, for instance, we're departing 32 left, they're departing 20, or we're landing 4 right, departing 32 left, they're not showing 2-8 right is available. But they're going to make it available, they're not going to have it closed, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be available if somebody needs it. But they have to give a two-hour notice. So they believe that by forcing them to give a two-hour notice, they're going to eliminate some of the, some of the aircraft that say they need it that really don't need it. The other thing that comes into play, too, and it's not on here, they're going to extend 2-7 left in the years coming. And up here, that runway gets extended, and then 2-7 center comes into play. Now, 2-7 left's going to be 11,500 foot, and 2-7 center is like 11,240. So that's pretty, it's a long runway. And once that happens, you'll get more relief. You know, everybody's going to 2-8 right and 2-8 center now if it's a big airplane that needs a long runway, and that's going to change, so...
Right, it's, I just think the problem is, and I, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
And I understand, there is, the noises increase, you know, I live right off of Aitaskus Street, a false railroad. And I'll tell you one thing, those cargo planes are terrible at night. And I see your point in that, but, I mean, I think the relief needs to be also more at night on cargo planes, because they wake the people up more than anything. I mean, yeah, you got the other planes, but the cargo planes are just huge.
And there's enough of them. That's why Craig and I are concerned, you know, they're going to ask for that long runway.
Yeah, and you know, for a controller, it doesn't matter what they do with their controllers. Controllers are not allowed to debate whether a pilot needs a runway or not. You know, it's up to the pilot, it's really up to the airlines, the city to get with the airlines and have the airlines hold the pilots accountable if they really didn't need to use that runway, you know? But that, it's a concern, you know, the best, it's...
And their weight affects when they, how they climb, and where they turn also, so you can see the dispersion there of those 290 tracks.
And that's why I had the six-month test, see what happens. All right, would you were next? Go ahead.
Yeah, back to the bar chart that you had for Day 2.
There you go. Ah, geez, there we go.
Go ahead.
So when I look at that simply, except for Day 2, I ask, where's the relief? Doesn't, doesn't look like there's a great difference in, from Day 1 to 12, except for Day 2. And that's only going to happen if it's a good weather day and we don't have a lot of delayed traffic that's requesting the longer runway and seven other things fall into place.
Good. Who wants to take that?
Yeah, it's, I believe the equivalent noise level overall right now is in the, is 50.55 or something like that for Wooddale, and I think it goes down to 48-something. So it's, it's an improvement, but that's what we're trying to do, is make it better, you know, as much as we can.
Yeah.
But, but just given the restrictions of what we're working with, the three southern runways, right, it's really math, right? X amount of planes landing in a small area generates X amount of noise.
But when you look at, if you look at the past history, you know, 78% of the time, you're landing on the same three runways, departing on the same three runways. And those runways are pointed at this area right here. So that's going to go down. I mean, they're coming into 2-2 right under this plan. 2-2 right goes over Park Ridge. Park Ridge has zero traffic during the midnight hours right now. 4 right, which goes along the east edge of Bensonville, basically along the interstate tollway, is not used at all, you know? 32 left has not been used. 14 right coming in over Arlington Heights hasn't been used since they opened 10 center. So there's three, you know, three, and that's, that's six out of the 12, or is it, is it six out of the 12 rotations?
Absolutely. And even just going, you know, from, if you did east flow and west flow on successive nights, there's a big difference right there, you know? And we think anyways, compared to what they used to do, I think that will be better. Arrivals seem to be better than departures for the most part.
Right. There's been no plan in the past, you know, it's really city operations, calls the control tower at 9:30 at night and says, we're going to leave it, these two runways open. As long as the tower's good with it, that's what happens. There's no consideration for noise or rotation for anything.
It's about safety as well.
The other thing we looked at is wind, historical wind. The wind, when the wind's less than five knots, it doesn't matter, it doesn't affect aircraft performance at all. And what we found is, it was 76% of the time during the midnight hours, the wind is less than five knots. It's almost 80% of the time, the wind is less than five knots, which means it's a favorable condition for runway rotation, because wind usually dictates what runways you're landing on. But if it's, you know, most of the time, there's no wind, there should be plenty of opportunity to rotate runways. So the plan is to do that, we'll see how the plan works. JDA's plan was to do a daily rotation. We wanted them to look at this every day and do a daily rotation. And that's not what they voted on, that's not what ONCC voted on, so it is what it is. But they'll test it, if it doesn't work, then you can, you can make adjustments or try the other option.
Follow-up, hold on, Wesley.
Yeah, so the follow-up to that is how do we determine if it's working or not? What's the...
They're going to look at the plan every month.
Criteria put in place to measure how this performs, if it's the same old data.
Yeah, right now, it's LAEQN, that's what they're going to look at. But I think that there's a few other things that are going to need to be looked at, too. If 2-8 right, for example, is closed for 90 days, let's say, there's going to have to be some, something in place to make sure that other configurations are used but not overused. And then later on, in the test period, 2-8 right gets used probably a lot more than it has been because it had been missed. I think there's just a lot of adjustments that are going to have to be made, and like I said, pretty happy it's a test period because some of these things will come out in the wash, and then you'll be able to see if it works or not, and what people are going to do.
Follow-up, go ahead.
Quick, and then the, the other, the 600-pound gorilla in the room. So the Fly Quiet, that nobody really adhered to, between 10 and 7, right, 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., that now magically becomes Fly Quiet 2, which is now 11, 11:30 to 5, 5:15. That's really part of the issue, too. So where people would complain at night about planes flying after 10, now we're openly saying they're going to fly 11 to 5:00 in the morning. We're effectively reducing the window of opportunity for people to sleep in the community. And our answer to that is, on the second week, Day 2 of a 14-day cycle or 14-week cycle...
It's the second week of the 12-week cycle.
Second week, so two weeks out of 12 weeks, you may be able to sleep.
All right.
Thank you.
Hold on, Wesley, you had another comment?
Who's going to, are they going to provide?
Are they going to provide the data to you, or who's...
They have, they have been providing the data. It's been, it's been a good thing. And it's, you know, I don't think it's been done anywhere else in the country before the amount of people working together on this, at least. And it's a tenuous spot. I mean, you're working together, so you can't just say, well, this is everything that I want and get it type thing, you're kind of working with them. And so far, for example, they're giving us the data, which makes it easy to run the numbers and things like that. But if we're not getting what we want out of this, I think that it'll be evident, you know, come after the test is finished in December. And that's where we start making adjustments to some of the things that Craig was talking about, some of the things that we wanted to see in there.
Hold on, Jacob, you had your...
Yeah, I had a couple of questions here. Number one, the enforcement of this, I mean, has the city of Chicago said that they are going to enforce this? This is the plan?
Enforcement is, it's a, well, I'll tell you what it's historically been anyways, you know? So when I was manager at O'Hare, we, we went on a tear, I'll call it, of saying, hey, we have a noise abatement policy, we need to be following it type of thing. So we had quality assurance in the, in the tower, air traffic control, run the numbers. They would get the City of Chicago input, they would tell them, this is what, what last month looked like, for example. And really, they were giving us data that was two months old, which was frankly, not very helpful. How do I come back to you and say, two months ago when you were working the midnight shift, you departed runway 2-8 right, didn't turn the aircraft? Why'd you do that type of thing? So they started giving it to us every two weeks. We would look at it, we would go into the controllers and say, hey, you know, two weeks ago, why'd you do it? Oh, well, this and the other thing happened. So it, follow-up type of thing. That's what it's going to be here also. And that's one of the reasons that some of the things that Craig was mentioning that, you know, we were so adamant about, you need a plan that's actually going to be followed. I mean, we could sit here and write one up that no one's going to do, and that's not going to do anybody any good at all. So you definitely need a plan that people are going to follow, and the policing will be by the FAA to themselves.
Go ahead, follow.
You had said something about if there's construction, that it might not happen, so if there is, if there just, so it happens to be construction on the week, what's going to happen to the plan?
Go ahead.
That's, that's one of the issues. Our recommendation was a daily rotation plan, okay? Because we know that there's runway closures that happen that are unforeseen. I mean, you have, you have the stuff, like what's going on with 2-8 right, it's pre-planned, they had to do it. But things happen daily, you know, an airplane reports a bump on the runway, they go out and look, and there's a 20-foot crack in the runway, they have to do concrete work. They have to go out there and paint lines, you know, they're out there mowing the lawn along the runways. They'll, they do a friction test that you see all that black tar that, or rubber that's built up on the runway, they have to shut the runway down to remove that stuff, they remove it with chemicals. Disabled aircraft on the runway, snowstorms in the wintertime. They, they've got three snow teams out there, they've got eight runways. So the secondary runways, the diagonals, which are the secondary runways, don't get which are the secondary runways, don't get plowed for days. So, it was not our, you know, this wasn't our recommendation to come out with a preset calendar-type plan that says on, you know, the week of August 1st through the 7th, you're not gonna have noise, Wooddale, you know? Because you can't, you can't foresee that happening. And, and that's part of the problem with it. There's a couple of things too, where they put, in the bottom of the slide there, it says, the FAA has not approved this plan. So, there's two configurations in there that Jim and I know that the control tower's gonna have a problem with, but yet they, they went ahead with it. And the big thing was, we said go with a daily rotation plan, I mean, we tried to sell that, we, we did everything we could, and they voted to go with the weekly plan, which is better than what you have now, because there isn't a plan now, you know? But we, we're pretty adamant that the daily plan works better. If you get something, a runway gets shut down for a couple of days, you can, you can skip it, go to another runway, and then get back to it. With the weekly plan, you're doing it, you have 52 chances during the year to, to spread noise out. And when it comes to September 1st, and the balance is all, you know, it's 70, 30, you know, you've got three months left. You've got 12 chances left to straighten it out. With the daily plan, you've got 365 chances of spreading noise, it worked a lot better. And it forces somebody to look at it every day, you know, you're doing it every day. On a weekly plan, it's Sunday night, they, they look at that, and they, and they're, the city's gonna say, okay, we're on this configuration. It doesn't matter, somebody's not gonna, you know, the winds can go calm the rest of the week, where they could rotate it around a little bit, they're not gonna think about it. They're just gonna wait till next Sunday night to look at it again, and that's one of the issues with it.
And, and it would get complicated too, tracking that. But, you know, Boston, I believe they have a computer suck where, that does that, and it helps air traffic control decide what runways they're gonna use on a given night, so, can be helped.
You have a follow up, go ahead.
Two quick follow-ups, so, there, is there a plan, if week one, there's construction, to use configuration for week number two, or there is no contention plan?
If that runway's not available, they'll just skip it and go on to week three.
Yep.
So, again, predictability, you know, you're talking about predictability there, where somebody may be looking at that saying.
Or expectation.
I'm not gonna get noise that week, you know, but if there's an issue, you are gonna get noise. And that's why we, we tried to tell them, you don't wanna predict something that, you know, it's impossible to predict the future, you don't know what's gonna happen, but they, they didn't buy it, they, they wanted to do what they wanted to do, so.
Go ahead, follow.
And my final question, I heard you guys mentioned 12 weeks, but then I heard the mayor say six months, so was it?
It's a six-month test.
Yes.
And they're gonna keep rotating to 12 weeks.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just so everybody knows, SOC has a newsletter that's coming out to go out to all the residents, give them information. Every community is gonna send it out, but everybody's gonna format it for their communities. Anything, did I miss anything, Jeff?
The newsletter will contain some of the slides that are in the report tonight. It'll give the residents a look at the different runway configurations over the 12 different patterns. It will also, I believe, have a hot link set up for surveys, and if you notice a noise change. And those surveys will be resubmitted then back to CDA, and taken in consideration along with JDA's analysis of the actual six-month plan. So, that mailer will be going out in short order. Every SOC community is sending out a similar newsletter, like the mayor said, customized for each community.
Do you have one more minute for a comment, real quick?
I did wanna make one quick comment. Just so the residents understand, you do not work for the city of Chicago, you work for a JDA who was hired by SOC, which we are a member of. And if you could, just for the record, your background again, for the camera.
I'm a career FAA person, I retired about a year and a half ago. I was air traffic controller for 28 and a half years, I spent four years at Midway, 24 and a half years at O'Hare. I was the elected president for the Air Traffic Controls Association for nine years. Commercially licensed pilot with all my ratings and.
Yeah, I worked over 33 years in the FAA as a controller supervisor, retired as the manager at O'Hare Tower, and also spent a year in charge of US runway safety for the FAA also.
And, go ahead, by all means, a comment.
And I just wanna repeat what I said before, we, we came up with 20 recommendations, this is one. The second, another big one is headings, because the headings that they get off those runways are, are in writing. And we're gonna start looking, for instance, 10 center, you know, if there's no, 2-8 right has a industrial area, so they try, they try to aim airplanes towards that area. 2-8 center is, comes right over residential area, so there's no good heading. So, the heading becomes, the default heading becomes the runway heading straight out. And in a situation like that, what we're gonna look at is to try to fan airplanes. If there's no good heading, why go straight out every day? You know, why, why not one night go straight out, or one week go straight out, the next week go 30 degrees left, the next week go 30? So, there's some, there's a lot of opportunity for, for more noise relief when we start looking at that stuff, as well as the, the other recommendations that, that are out there.
Right, and part of the hope is, if Fly Quiet Two does improve the situation, then there's a possibility of moving to the shoulder hours. Again, it's all gonna be discussions with the city, of course.
Right.
And, again, oh, you had another question, go ahead.
I said, what, you had, said you had 20 plans, was one of the plans to get the planes up higher, quicker, was that, I'm assuming that would.
Right, there's an FAA recommendation, a requirement, that the city get with the airport operators, with the airlines, and determine, there's two noise abatement departure procedures, NADP-1 and ATP-2. NADP-1 is for close-in, okay, so if you have houses right around the airport, which is O'Hare. NADP-2 is for resident, you know, areas that are a little bit further away, I think it's three miles or more. And we asked the question, you know, what, what, what are the pilots doing out of O'Hare over the minute, you know, during the Fly Quiet hours? And they didn't, there's no answer. I called the noise office myself, asked them for it, emailed them, they never got back to me, so, there's no answer. They have a Fly Quiet manual, which has been out there, it looks nice, it has a lot of nice pictures, a lot of good information in it, but none, but they don't update it, they don't, they don't, they don't follow any of it. And what's happening now is they have a new aviation commissioner, who, who actually has a background in aviation, and has experience in aviation, who's open to looking at everything. So, you know, that's why the city's working with JDA, and, and, but we do have that recommendation out there to figure out, go with the NADP-1, which means airplanes climb higher, at a higher rate of climb, get as high as you can fast, and then take it from there, you know, leave the airport boundary as high as possible, they don't do that right now.
And another recommendation was, after the initial turn, like the 290 that we showed you, perhaps waiting until a higher altitude for any turns after that point, so, instead of 3,000 feet like it is today.
Okay. Again, I'd like to thank you gentlemen for being here this, this evening, and giving us the presentation, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one item, I'm not sure if you are aware, this, this week is National Public Works Week, so on behalf of the manager's office and the city council, would like to extend a thanks to all our public work staff for the excellent job they do in the community, it is appreciated. That concludes my report.
Thank you, next, consent agenda, if no objections, entertain a motion.
I make the motion.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman D. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Now, entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance repealing the regulations set forth in Chapter 9 of the Wooddale Municipal Code concerning the comprehensive plan. Item number two, a resolution adopting the city of Wooddale's comprehensive plan. Item number three, a resolution seeking to approve a three-year contract between the city of Wooddale and Nature's Tree Incorporated as DBA Autumn Save-A-Tree for the Parkway Tree Pruning Program, and not to exceed amount of $90,141. Item number four, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Marton Construction for the Ward 3 Stormwater Project, and not to exceed amount of $362,942. Item number five, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Compass Materials for the Bulk Road Salt Contract, and a not to exceed of $80,580.50. Item number six, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Commonwealth Edison for the relocation of an overhead transformer platform at Irving Park Road and Ash Street, and not to exceed amount of $5,500. Item number seven, a resolution approving a license agreement between Cigicon LLC for the use of municipal right-of-way, do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman D. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chair reports, Alderman Catalano planning in zoning.
Yes, I have two merit, but the resolution for the 6 North 504 Central Avenue in Wooddale's been moved to July 21st. So, we tabled that to July 21st.
So, that is your motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
You still got the second one, you got to table the second one as well.
Yeah, and that's the, the ordinance also annexing the property, and that's also moved to July 21st.
That's your motion?
That's my motion to table it.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, G. Yes. And that passes. Public Health and Safety, no, thank you, Public Works, Alderman Woods.
Four reports, Mayor, one, approval of partial payment request, number one, to Copenhagen Construction, Inc. for the Edgewood Sidewalk Project, in an amount not to exceed $142,281.81, that is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman D. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, approval of partial payment request, number one, to RA Mancini for the Mill Road Water Main, in an amount not to exceed $156,907.13, that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions on that? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman D. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman for Public Works Building Repair Engineering Services, and an, and a not to exceed amount of $9,760, that is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman D. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley? Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and HR Green for Tiff Infrastructure Project, and a not to exceed amount of $71,027, that is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Ald, did you have a hand up, Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Is that for the first phases, or is this?
Mr. Murmas.
This is to update our previous Thorndale Corridor master plan scenario. There may be future expenditures down the road, but this is an isolated project, so this will get us full completion of this project, but this may spur other projects down the loan for, or down the road for future follow-up.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman D. Wesley? Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Finance and Administration, Alderman Jacob.
I have one report, SOC financial contribution for O'Hare noise for $20,000, that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman D. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. That concludes your report.